All right, we're live now, Walter.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I will call the select board to order. Purpose of this meeting is several fold. We are going to review warrant language. We're going to talk about what we can and can't do in terms of a town meeting. With, I'm going to review guidance from the state, except there hasn't been any since we met last, of any substance, and then look at possible approaches to town meeting and dates. First of all, are there adjustments to the agenda? I do want to flip, I do want to flip the second bullet in front of the first. The second being the guidance rather than the warrant article itself.
Okay.
So, public comment for items not on the agenda, and I'll give a couple of minutes for anybody out there in Cyberland to log a question or a comment.
It says that there are two people watching right now, and we'll give them a good 60 seconds. Remember, as a reminder for folks, there is a 20-second delay between this conversation and what you see on YouTube.
Hi, Jan. Hi, how you doing? Good. Yes, son.
So, there's only one person watching now, and I haven't received any comments.
Okay. Then probably doesn't, doesn't call for us to go over the, the stat of the gardening design at this point. I will, I do would like Sandy to change this memo a little bit before you send it out to delineate very specifically Phase One. And, because it gives the impression that all of this donated, the items requested for donation have, are part of Phase One, and I'm not, I'm not sure that that's the, that's accurate. If it is, it means that it's a bigger project than I had envisioned in the short term.
Yep.
But I can see about a hundred, if I look out on my patio, I can see about 100 seedlings waiting to get planted.
Okay, you lost me. I was off the phone. I apologize for a moment.
Hi.
What are we talking about?
Owen received a, a request from Sandy Retzlaaf to send an email out to the electronic town soliciting volunteers to come on June 6th and 7th to help plant and dig the first phase of the garden design that we endorsed.
Oh.
But then she has, what?
At the town hall?
Yeah. Um. So, um. So, we'll, we'll wordsmith that, or there's a couple of changes I'd like in that memo before it goes out, so I'll do it with Sandy independently on that.
Okay.
That was going to be the, that was the, I was asked to comment. I was asked to be part of the audience and comment on this. Okay, so, um. The state has not come forth with any further guidance, especially they have not, it has not answered the requests, any of the four requests from MMA about how to, how a town like, like ours should deal with town meeting, which is very unfortunate. We did, I did ask MMA Legal some questions, and I'll review this. I think I sent you guys the response and the questions, and this is for the recording. I asked if we could deny admittance to a, an attendance town meeting to anybody who didn't wear a mask, and they said, no, we can't do that. And I said, can we take temperatures and reject anybody that is outside the norm? And they said, no, we can't do that. That would be disenfranchising people. And then I proposed Owen's 50 people in one room and 50 people in another as being conforming to the guidelines, and they said, no. That's 100 people meeting. And that exceeds the guidelines as they exist today. So, we're constrained. We, if we have a town meeting and more than 50 people show up, then we exceed the guidelines of 50 people. And we can't, we can't hold a, you know, a two-room 50-piece people, so we're, we're constrained. Now, there's one scenario that still exists, and what I'd propose to do is table this discussion, and let's go through the items on the warrant. And then what I'd propose is that we send the items that we like or agree to to Kristen, and then ask her to take us step by step through her proposed workaround for a quasi-attended town meeting with a single ballot that people would come in and cast over a two- or three-hour period at that quasi-attended town meeting. And just get her opinion on that, because, you know, lawyers tell you what you can get away with, or what you can do, and then you decide what you're going to do. So, what I'd like is to have that very specifically identified, and then we can start to poke holes in it or go forward with it. Meanwhile, the clock continues to tick, and we may get some guidance. She may increase the, the gathering limit on June 11th. While I was saying to Owen that one of the pre-supposed preconditions for all these reopenings were that the number of cases were going, went down over a 14-day period, and of course, since Janet announced the reopening of May, and the cases are going up. So, that's interesting.
Yeah, but of course, is that due to more testing, or, you know, that's always the question.
Is it more testing or more people running around without masks? Yes. So, that's what happens when you change two variables. At the same time, you don't know which one is responsible for more of the outcome.
Just one quick thing on the, the 50-person limit item. Just, it was something that was discussed in the office today, just to think about. If we got to, for some reason, we did open town meeting, and we had, you know, that 51st person show up, we can't necessarily deny that individual. However, it could be that we have noticed a rain date, and that if we exceed or get to the, you know, past 50-person limit, then the board or some individual is teed up to move to a date and time-specific postponement of town meeting. And then if that item is voted down by the town, they can override the moderator. We would be breaking the law, but the town could basically say, no, we don't want to postpone it, and we want to continue on with greater than 50 people, and then we wait for the state police to come and attempt to try to arrest us all? I don't know. But just something to-
For that. Let me throw something on the table that will just be part of our calculus. Cheryl asked me in my, in my new role as AIPAC representative from the town to talk to the airport manager about the idea of using one of their large hangars as a venue. And I did that. I was able to get ahold of Jeremy Shaw, who's the airport and security manager, and he received it positively. He says that they have a snow removal equipment building, which is one of their large hangars, which is 11,000 square feet, and they could make that available for us for a town meeting. And obviously, we could do some math, but he says it's a matter of pulling the equipment outside the building and making it open. You know, we would be responsible for setting up the chairs and taking them down, and obviously, a sound system. But it would be an enclosed roofed venue that would allow us, I think, probably, we'd have to do some math on the floor footage, but we probably could get more than 50 people and still be six feet apart and still, you know, comply with all the other guidelines. And I, and I emphasize they are guidelines. I don't, I don't think you're in danger of the state police coming and carrying you away. You exceed 50 people, but I'm not, you know, it's all in the realm of possible, I guess. But anyway, I throw that out as a, as a calculus. I told them that we were going to discuss it at this meeting, and that I asked him if there were any dates that he would, it would not be available, or would be a challenge for him. He did not come back with any yet, so it's on the table for consideration.
Good. Thanks for doing that. That's, let's put that in the mix of possibilities here.
And just to build on that, if it got to the point of being concerned about cleaning of the area after the fact, the town would be on the hook for 10% of the cost of cleaning that. But if we needed to clean a public space of which we utilized, we would submit the cleaning costs to FEMA as a COVID-related reimbursable.
Good. Is one of the graduations being held at the airport, or is it the transportation museum? Does anybody know?
No, I don't.
Yeah, Oceanside is doing its graduation at either, either at the airport or at the transportation museum.
Well, then they're clearly exceeding 50 people, so.
They're not.
They're not?
No, they, they've got some, well, maybe I'm confusing that with Camden. Cam- Camden's just parents and students.
Yeah, but even the graduating class, isn't that 50 people?
Oceanside's 80. So, yeah.
Well, I noticed that several of the colleges have already exceeded, they've stayed the six-foot separation, but they well beyond the 50 number of people at commencement.
Okay, so let's circle back to, go ahead, Cheryl.
I'll just throw in the fact that we can't get guidance. I think that the onus is on us to provide that safe, reasonable spacing and a place and have our annual meeting, because we are a small community. And we provide our own guidance based on some of the other offer masks and, and hand sanitizer, you know, as they come in if they need it, and if anyone is concerned about it, then don't come to the meeting. I mean, there's risk in everything. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Well, that being the case.
Lame duck.
Yeah, easy for you to say, lame duck. I guess I would then say, if we're going to have a town meeting with attendance, then we should have the full warrant. Although, I'm, I'm of mixed emotions about that, because I think those four articles don't want 30 people to debate them. I think they want 50 or 60, or, you know, back in the good old days when there were 100, but.
Yeah, I think, Walter, I hear what you're saying, but I think that, and your point was already made, that there, there are some on there that are so emotional and so that, that some people won't come still because of the virus. And I hate to have them stay away if they're people that would want to have their piece about, you know, these other issues, so. I would just assume, I mean, we, if we had to, we could, we could, I don't know, I, could people bring them onto the agenda if they're on the warrant?
No.
Couldn't add to the warrant at the meeting, right?
Well, they, we could be petitioned, but we have 60 days to respond to the petition.
Okay.
So, at this point, at this point, a petition doesn't get anything on, I believe, the guidance. I'll have to go back and recheck it, because I did this months before. That, there wasn't a petition, because we agreed to put these things on the warrant. So, they, and we did, but now circumstances have changed. So, if we don't put them on the warrant, then we can be petitioned, but we have 60 days to respond to the petition and, and schedule a special town meeting.
Owen, have you heard anything since the Thursday newspaper came out? Because I noticed that Steve Betts in there told the town that it wasn't going to be on the, on the warrant. I was wondering if anybody pushed back.
No, I haven't received any communication about that. I mean, I received a handful of.
The reference to Guilford Butler School and said that it would not be on the warrant this time.
No, and nothing, nothing specific to Guilford Butler's come into the email, anyway.
How many people were on that last Zoom YouTube, do you recall?
I don't think we've ever really exceeded like eight or nine at one time.
Okay, because we, we were specific about that, you know, postponing it at that, at that meeting, so.
However, that's, that's people participating while you all are live. That's different than people that might have watched it later on that night or the next day. I can check some of those numbers, though.
Okay. All right, so Jen and Cheryl, would you still support the smaller warrant and defer the more controversial four items until some future time?
Waterman, aye.
Yep, I would too, as well.
Okay, all right. So, how about Owen, you read each of the current ones, and we'll ship them off to Kristen for approval if we approve them. And then we'll take a vote as to whether we want to pursue the aircraft hangar.
Great. And just so you know, that meeting that you all just referenced had 42 viewers altogether. That wasn't people at the same time, but that was how many people have watched it since then. On the first page of the draft warrant, all that information is kind of subject to change based on however you all want to conduct town meeting. So, items that reference drive-in balloting, or in-person, or things like that, all subject to change based on how it is that you want to, to move forward, so.
You know, when you, when you ship this off to Kristen, delete all that.
Yep.
Just for the warrant itself.
Yep. Article one, and then, so as we go through these, though, recognize that the way that it's been written was to always call for a written ballot. And so, that original, you know, what follows the kind of preamble to the, to the article, you know, so for the budget, for example, to see if the town will vote by written ballot. So, just referencing that all of the language that's in here was intended to compel a written ballot for each one of these items, which linked in with the drive-in theory.
Right, okay, so if we're not going to do that, we don't have to do this, so.
And then we can go right back to our original language that allows for an up or down. So, I would just sub in the, the historical language that the town has used.
So, yeah, what, that's what I would suggest, is strip out the four or so that we want to defer and resubmit to Kristen, and then we'll have to go to the public with it as well, because it's a, and that's the one that hopefully would get posted, et cetera, et cetera.
So, Article one, always got to have, it's the moderator. Article two and three are elections for the school board and select board members. We have no individuals that took out nomination papers, so there are no one with their name submitted, and so.
Can I just make, can I make a comment?
Please.
This is, and I want to get the opinions of Cheryl and Jan. I think we should go out through the electronic mail and on the website and ask for anybody who's interested in being a write-in candidate for any of, either of those two positions, to please come forward and identify themselves. It just, I mean, certainly, I know, Jan, when you ran as a write-in, you sent a letter to the paper saying, here I am, and here's who I am.
Yeah, exactly, introductory letter.
You know, I think that's, I didn't do that, because I don't know why I didn't do it. I guess I figured it was the second, everybody knew who I was. Same with, and Cheryl took out nomination papers the second time, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, anyhow, that's neither here nor there. But would you guys, would you guys sanction that we, we ask, you know, let us know? Especially if we, if we don't go forward with this aircraft hangar thing, and we do do a written, a written ballot, who do you know who to write in?
Right. No, I, I don't see any harm in doing that. We can certainly, it's a request. We can certainly go out and solicit and request as broadly as possible. Solicitation could mention the fact that, you know, this is an unusual time and unusual circumstances, and it would be very difficult, particularly with write-in. You know, what are you going to wait until somebody drives by and writes somebody in? I mean, it's, you know, it would be, you'd be driving by all night long.
All right, Owen, keep it going.
Cheryl, did you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think it's, you know, put the word out when we're having the meeting, and that the signet, well, the issues are that if anyone's interested, just throw it out there with, with all the information, posting it with the warrant.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have that be, you know, on our yet-to-be-determined meeting, but I can have, you know, language just referencing that things are odd, and so we're, there's a range of options, getting it out into the public who might be under consideration would be helpful.
Yep.
All right, so Article four is to see if the town will approve the creation of the reserve account for the transfer station and fund it through those monies that we receive from MRC Perk. It's pretty straightforward. You all can take that money out of surplus now if you wanted to, if the transfer station wanted it, but to set it aside and get the determination from.
Don't think so.
No, the annual powers that you all are given every year do allow you to draw down surplus as you see fit. If they didn't want you to do that, they wouldn't give you that authority. It's, it was the establishment of the reserve account that you all don't have the authority to do, and it's a smart thing if you want to have the town be aware of the, the movement of funds and what you're intending to use them for, but technically, you can draw that money down whenever you wanted.
This is what we've told the town from the beginning, we were going to do with that money, so.
Yep. Do you all want to continue to leave that in there? I see that as relatively non-controversial and just kind of fulfilling a cleanup item that we've indicated to the town was going to be proposed.
Yeah, it may be, it may be moot at that, by the time town meeting happens, because on Thursday night, we're going to open the compactor bids, and once we do that, the transfer station board is going to go to all three towns to ask for the money. So, that's going to be a sooner rather than later. And I'm just looking at legal language here.
So, if you're looking at last year's.
This year's, our warrant only says that we can use surplus to reduce taxes, which is what I thought has always been the case.
I guess then, and not a bulletproof worded, you can make arguments, I suppose, on both sides, that it's either you're going to try to raise taxes to pay for the item, or you're going to utilize that and not have to. Gray areas abound.
Well, we'll, we'll leave the article in there anyway.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so we're leaving that one in. Article five is the budgetary funding article. I assume you all want that one kept in there as well.
Yeah, I, I think if we're going to have an open town meeting, then we should, we should revert to the, our standard methodology of presenting each department's budget appropriation excise, or, yeah, appropriation, funding source, and do those one at a time, because the whole purpose of opening this meeting up is to give people the opportunity to amend. And, so, I, I think that's my, my request, or my, I thought here is that we go back to articles.
Article nine in the original warrant.
Nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, that whole string. Sorry, Owen, but this is just a cut-and-paste job for you to send it to, to Kristen, anyway.
Oh, yeah, that's not, it's not, I'm looking at all the language right now. That's not going to be a difficult move.
And the basic changes, you'll, seeing the lines and things, that would still be appropriate if they have the book, the original town report.
Correct.
As, as a reference.
Yes.
I hate to jump around, but I'm curious if we're looking at kind of what the original warrant was, and if we are going to go more to the open-town-meeting style, one of the three ordinances that we had proposed is relatively non-controversial, and that's the one for the shellfish board. I'm curious if you all would want to put that one back on there to help out the shellfish folks, leave land use and junkyard ordinance out for the time being, or if you wanted to put those ones back in as well.
So, first of all, shellfish should stay, because we have other people depending upon us for that. Junkyard goes away. We are having, aren't we having a hearing on the 18th?
Correct, on both, on both of those, land use and junkyard.
Okay, so how about we make a final decision at or after that meeting, depending upon what we think the level of controversy on the the junkyard we know is going to go, but the other land use, I think that'll be innocuous, but let's make sure.
And just a quick, oh, go ahead, Cheryl.
How much time do we have to post our warrant before the annual meeting is held?
That's what I was about to bring up. If we did. It's seven days. If we did the public hearing on the 18th, then the earliest, after solicitation of information on that, the earliest we could do would be June 25th. If you wanted to have your town meeting prior June the 25th, then you would not put either of those two ordinances on. You can put the shellfish one on, because they've already done their public hearings, and it's not part of our process. But with the other two, the earliest would be June 25th.
It's my opinion that we would, as Walter said, leave the shellfish one on, and the other two, we could go to next year if we had to.
Okay, Owen, is there a sense of urgency about the, the land use stuff? It's cleanup, right?
It's, it's cleanup. There's not a huge sense of urgency on that, and that can be deferred for, for some period of time, and the same with the junkyard.
Ask, ask Eileen to confirm that.
Yep, well, and I'll also, I'll ask Eileen and Jeff Northgraves, because he's heading up ordinance review.
The review, yeah, okay. Good, we're making progress here.
All right, so heading back over, I'm sorry for being slightly disjointed, everyone. I jump over to YouTube to make sure there's no questions there. All right, so, keep that, keep that, keep that, break down the budget back into its original items, put shellfish back on. The borrowing for the streetlight project, and my apologies, I said to you all earlier today, I would get the, the interest payback for a six-year versus the five-year that you had originally put on there. I haven't done that yet. It will raise the interest amount, but not by much. The difference was five years at 2.75% or six years at 2.85%. That's what Machias told us. That's what Machias told us. And it's only based on the investment grade audit and their payback period going to five point two years. That made me think maybe we wanted to look at the six-year loan instead of the five-year.
So in, if we stay with what we're doing, we're paying for this a little bit ahead of when the break-even point of the payback is.
Yes, and that, that payback, and I probably shouldn't do some more analysis on that. The, the payback isn't based on our financing, it's based on cost savings. But we tied the two together. We're paying back based on the cost savings. So if we did a six-year payback, we've really made it so that the cost savings, even if something odd does happen. Uh, and maybe a, a bid comes back a little bit higher or something like that. We still can pay back on that six-year time period and feel more comfortable that we're not raising the budget at all. We do have to pay a little bit more in interest, but we have an additional year to pay that back. Maybe I'm not wording this quite properly, but do you get what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. But what I'll do is, especially by the time Kristen's looked at it, she doesn't, she doesn't care what our financing options are. She had, I was looking over correspondence about the warrant with Kristen. And she had just wanted to make sure that we did have the financial statement on there.
Yeah, she only cares about there being a treasurer's statement.
Right, so I'll have the numbers run on what the six-year payback would be in interest and all that stuff. And bring that to you all when you actually go to set the warrant.
Okay, um, let's, um, let's circle back to when all this came about. And we got engaged, because both you and I discovered independently that Rockland, Camden, Rockport, et cetera, were all doing this.
Correct.
And then you got approached, right, to join the party?
Uh, yes.
So at the time, was there a CMP alternative?
So at the time.
Lights?
I think CMP was just starting it at that time, and so it wasn't widely known. I happened to have, one of my old childhood friends works for CMP. And we got together and I was complaining about his company. And he said, oh yeah, these kayak things, I've been doing them recently. And I think it's CMP's reaction to the fact that municipalities are doing this. I talked with Terry Baines. I, I'm sorry I haven't had a chance to respond to Jen's questions. But yeah, they are still going to have to pay the lease amounts for the utilization of those lights on the poles. That's the bulk of where the cost savings is coming from. She believes, I guess Tim was running most of this. Um, and so she knew a, a bit of information about it, but not in great detail. Their cost saving is going to be more on the consumption side. Because CMP will have to restructure how much they're saying is consumed every month by those devices. Because they're now energy efficient. So that's the, the maintenance is done by CMP. Though I'm not confident in CMP's ability to do maintenance in a timely manner. And the cost savings is just in the consumption and not on the lease.
The consumption will still rely on CMP to tell them how much it is. There's no smart technology there.
I asked about, I asked about the smart controls and CMP's ability to, to know how much was actually consumed. That seems to be a, a Tim question and not a Terry question. She didn't know the answer to that. If I look.
About the town being able to determine how much is used.
Yeah, I mean, if CMP decided to put it on there, they, they could. Where they're not compelled to yet by the PUC, then they're, they're probably going to forego that cost. It can be an aftermarket thing. But if it's based on what they're currently doing, then they do a, these amount of hours per day, these amount of days per month. This amount of consumption per hour equals your device should be consuming this amount. And they never meter it. And so your light could be out, but they're still going to send you a bill.
Yep. And the question I had on ours, which you don't have to answer now, was it looked to me like we had smart controls. But there was going to be an annual cost per light is what I, way I read it. For that smart control that was, that I assume could be subject to change over the life of the agreement.
And you said it was three fifty per?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the summary page that you sent us.
Yep.
I think it was, was it number seven or something like that on it?
Yeah, so.
Was it the three fifty? Was the three fifty per year, Jan? I'm just.
Yes, three fifty per year, but I thought it was.
Times fifty-one is.
A hundred and seventy, yeah, if you round up.
Yep. Yeah, per node per year is how it's read, ongoing fees.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Sounds like they outsourced that, you know, to another company, Ubiqua. And, and my concern was, is I haven't seen anything that tells us whether that's going to stay three fifty per node per year. Or is it going to jump after five years to twenty dollars per node per year? You know, I mean, I, there's, there's no, no control I see on it. We'll have to be careful of that contract.
I'll check in with some of the other managers on that one and with RealTerm. A hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year to know what lights are on, what lights are off. And alter and change things, I think is, is not a horrible annual fee. But you're right, how locked in are we? But at the same time, there's a lot of things that we pay for annually, of which we're not really locked into. And, and we don't know exactly what private industry is going to do later on.
Right. But you know, understand that RealTerm does this because they want to make money. So, you know, there's, it's not a charitable issue here.
No, and that's why they very much push that they do, we do their maintenance package.
Right.
Because what we're going to be giving them is a one-off. They want that annual cash flow in the maintenance.
Yep.
And, and all they do is they're just a middle pa, middleman pass-through. They're not really doing the maintenance at all.
We call them and they call Hestram Electric.
Right.
Correct.
What a deal.
Yep.
I know that model very well.
Oh yeah.
But we want to continue to keep the streetlight article on there, just subject to your all's approval on the, the five or six-year payback.
For sure.
Okay, great. If we are going back to more of an open town meeting style. The, the Article Seven in the draft warrant that I sent out today. I mean, that could be broken into multiple different articles. That said, it is a grouping of items of which are relatively non-controversial. They're, they're offered basically every year. And I guess I don't see any reason why Article Seven as presented with everything lumped together couldn't be amended to remove some power that the board has. But I've, it's never been my experience that those annual powers, renewal of powers have been controversial. And they typically just pass right through.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
The, uh, we had the legal opinion that we don't have to go through all those. I don't know exactly what ones they are. I didn't read them. But all those powers are assumed that we still have those during this whole time.
You do, but it's, it's subject to town meeting. So if we're having town meeting, then it's no longer renewed.
So here, I, I like, here, I appreciate the lumping together. But in my opinion, there are any number of fellow residents of ours who have the warrant ingrained in their brains. And they can tell you every article, and they expect to see all of those things, because they've been conditioned to. So my point is not, I'm not being critical. I'm just saying, the more changes you introduce at a time of, of discord and change. The more opportunity there is for discussions to go down rat holes. So the more things look like the, the past in this particular year, I think the better off we are.
I agree on that, Walter, and we're at a point where it's almost, what articles are we going to remove?
Yeah, we're going to remove four. We're going to remove three Guilford butlers and one junkyard.
There you go, renumber it, you know.
Yeah, that, that's what I would, exactly. I would stick as close to the published warrant that we put in the town report as possible, and just remove the ones that we're not going to have. Which I put down as Article Six, Article Seven. And then Article eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Yep.
Yeah. Yep.
The rest, I think we could leave the same and write the same. And everybody's got them in their annual reports that they can bring with them tucked under their arm.
Uh, can I make a suggestion? That we broadcast, if we go to the, um, to the aircraft hangar, that we also Zoom YouTube the meeting. So that anybody who doesn't want to attend can at least watch their town meeting. And then they may want to come running up, you know, to vote for Article seventeen. And check in and then leave, so. Just put that, back to that into your thinking, Owen, as to, as to how we go about it.
They'll have to come all the way to Owl's Head though to do that.
Oh yeah, I know, a tremendous hardship that is. At least, at least it won't snow, we think. Cheryl?
Yes, like, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. The more eyes on it, the better.
And I'll check with Jeremy. Basically, all I need is to know that there's Wi-Fi in that hangar. And then I can basically do some light audio visual, run it all through the laptop like I've been doing all these meetings. Just with some better microphones to pick, pick stuff up.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a better microphone, PA system anyway, for.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, do you have the ball to follow up on this, Owen? Or do we, do you want Jan, this is already gone down, down the path to volunteer to help you out?
I'm, I'm willing to volunteer to help in any way. I'm not sure that that would have Wi-Fi, but it might, because they have to batch out of it. So you, you just have to check with them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with them on that. And then, um, not too much of a stretch. But any additional cost that we incur doing a different style town meeting. We, I will submit them to FEMA. I'll let FEMA try to reject it. But if we're doing town meeting items and we need additional audio visual, because we space people out. Um, I don't think it's a stretch to say that this is, you know, somehow not COVID-related expenses and can't be reimbursable. We do have to eat the ten percent, uh, but ninety percent reimbursement's not bad.
Great, we get it. It wouldn't count until it's in your pocket.
Provide, provide masks.
Yep, we have masks, uh, we have enough masks for vast majority of the people in town on hand already.
We should encourage people to wear them and bring them, and then have them for people who don't.
And then just while I have you all, one thing on those reimbursements, I did, uh, talk to the people at the state. Because of concern of maybe FEMA running out of money, I wanted to be Johnny on the spot. Our stuff's been approved. Um, and so I could be submitting some of these expenses. I've told you all about the thirty-three-hundred-dollar threshold to be an eligible reimbursable party. What it became was, can I cross that threshold, submit, get reimbursed? And then if something comes up after that, am I just building on my thirty-three-hundred? Or did the dollar amount start again? And they said it starts again. If you're like a Portland or something, or a Bangor, of which it's very easy for them to cross that thirty-three-hundred-dollar threshold, then you might want to submit. You'll cross thirty-three-hundred again. You can resubmit and get reimbursed over time. Uh, but with us being so small, I'm going to hold off, even though I don't want to, until we know we're basically done with all of our expenses. Because I don't think that we're going to incur sixty-six-hundred dollars worth of expenses in total.
Let's hope not.
Let's hope not. All right, so yeah, I feel really good about the warrant and what moving and deleting of that would look like. I'll send you all out a draft. I'll send it to Kristen and try to schedule a time to talk with her. And then I'll work with Jan on touching base with Jeremy at the airport and seeing what other infrastructure might be needed for us to, to do it in there. I'll see if the airport has chairs. Uh, the RSU would likely loan us some if we needed, and then we do have some on hand here as well.
Okay, um, so pending legal review and approval. Is there a motion to approve the revised warrant, or do we want to wait?
I would recommend waiting, just because, yeah, you never, and then, and then I gotta, we gotta go back and yeah, I'll have to reconsider again. And it's just a little bit of a pain.
Okay. And we're meeting on the ninth.
Correct.
So let's circle back to a target date for the town meeting.
The ninth is still at six PM, right?
Yeah.
The public meetings on the eighteenth, what time are those?
Oh, they start at six, if I recall correctly. Let me, let me just check though, real quick.
Historically, they were at seven, but maybe they changed.
It was six to seven to allow for the planning board to then meet after at their customary seven o'clock time. They might actually have some business to take care of. And so they start at seven, so we were going to do the public hearing from six to seven.
Let me ask this, how are they having a plan? Are there going to be a Zoom planning board meeting?
And Zoom public hearings.
Okay.
And unless you all direct otherwise, um, but we still are allowed to do Zoom meetings, including public hearings.
Okay, thanks.
Perfectly fine. I'm having a Zoom cocktail party on Sunday. All right, um, any other agenda items?
You want to tentatively shoot for a date while we're thinking about the year, you know?
Yeah, when you start talking to, um, to Jeremy. Owen?
Yep, Jeremy Shaw.
Tuesdays were always, we want to wait till June thirtieth, or?
June twenty-third.
Well, that, that'll rule out those ordinances though, if you decide to put them on. It'll be too soon.
You're right. All right, so June thirtieth is the next Tuesday.
If you wanted to, see, we don't have to, there's, there's no.
No hard and fast law about Tuesdays.
Um, like I said, we're not, I mean, a decent amount of the cleanup language was just to minimize confusion in the ordinance. There are some things that are better to be defined and, and would be beneficial for the town. But we can defer those to a special town meeting in the fall. Or whenever makes sense and do them in conjunction with Guilford Butler items and other things of which might want to be discussed. In a more robust fashion.
So, but, so, um, go ping Eileen and ask her about sense of urgency. And Jeff, feed that back to us. If there is none, then let's, I would suggest we do the twenty-third. If, if they want those articles, then let's do the thirtieth. And the reason I'm picking Tuesdays is that there are other calendars that, um, gobble up Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and, you know. And we kind of have heard about inconveniencing those, those constituents in the past. So try to, let's try to avoid that. Have heard about inconveniencing those, those constituents in the past, so try to, let's try to avoid that.
1800 hours meeting, like at six o'clock. An hour earlier than normal. Daylight.
It's fine with me.
I'm okay with that if, if, if it's not too late for people to work. Or too early, I mean.
Yeah, let's, I would stay with the seven o'clock, Cheryl, because of that.
Okay.
And then.
Said, you know.
One other thing, just as far as. Kind of processy check-ins. No, forget it. I was going to say the 18th is also a meeting of the board to do that public hearing. I was just trying to give you all the latest date that you could set the warrant. Doing it on June 9th gives the town two full weeks. To have it be posted publicly and for us to put that information out there. So if you're doing it on the 23rd, then the absolute latest to set that warrant would be the 16th, but we can do it all on the 9th.
All right, good progress, I think.
Anything else?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Cheryl? Hi.
Hi.
Jan?
Hi.
You got, you all didn't actually vote on the 23rd. You, you, you wanted, that's a tentative, just I'm trying to get myself straight. That's a tentative. Subject to any sort of change from my conversations with Jeremy, and that will be confirmed on the 9th?
No, it's your conversation with Eileen, I think, about, and Jeff about the importance of those ordinances.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure you weren't intending on firming that date up with a vote. And that you would firm up the town meeting date based on Jeremy, Jeff, Eileen, and would do it on June 9th at your meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi.
Good night.
Good night.
I'll talk to Jeremy about those dates, just to be sure the dates are both open, 23rd and 30th.
Cheryl and Jan, thanks for coming up with that.
Oh, thanks to Cheryl.
Thanks, Jan. Teamwork, okay.
Teamwork, love it.
Alright, folks, be well.
Take care, Walter.
All right, bye.
Be safe.